Meeting at the Hammond Common Council order for Monday, September 13.
Eternal God our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Lord, I'm just asking that you would continue to keep our youth safe, Lord God. Continue to cover them in each and every school, Lord. Lord, for every person that is battling with COVID, Lord God, would just ask that you would heal their bodies right now in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you for everything that you're doing in this season through this council and through this mayor. And, Lord, we pray and we ask that you keep us, continue to keep us safe. In Jesus' name, amen.
Carmen Roque.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Present.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Warple.
Here, let the record show, nine present, eight in person, one electronically. Mayor?
Hi, thanks, Council President, and thanks to the members of the council. I have a pretty busy report from the mayor. It's been three weeks since we last met. I have a lot of stuff to talk to you about, so I'll try to go as fast as possible. But, of course, if you have any questions, please. I wanted to start off with the resolution that's pending before the council that covers the first phase of spending from the American Rescue Plan. We put forward a budget and recommendations for qualified shovel-ready projects that we could start working on ASAP. Fifty percent of the money's already come in. Is that a true story, Megan? Fifty percent of the money's come in, so we're talking over $25 million of ARP money has already hit the books in the city of Hammond. Obviously, we haven't spent a penny. We need to have a resolution and a plan approved by the council before we can begin work on this. So, we put forth, like I said, a list of projects that we've had in the hopper, but we haven't had the money to pay for them. And, the American Rescue Plan, in my opinion, is a godsend. I want to thank the Biden administration, Congressman Murvan, Congressman Carson, the only two congressmen in the state of Indiana that voted for this. Our senators voted for it, and seven out of the nine congressmen voted against it. Hammond gets, between the schools and the city, $100 million, between the schools and the city. City Gary gets $150 million, probably. East Chicago gets similar amounts, Indianapolis, South Bend, so I think this is great for our city. It gives us the ability to start working on great projects right off the bat. So, this is a list of the qualified shovel-ready projects we've identified for the first phase that would cover about three-quarters of the money, $38 million out of the $50 million available. First project is in Robertsdale, the lead remediation project. This $4 million budgeted would cover 80% of the project cost. That's been a project that's pending in Robertsdale for quite some time. It's a problem up there, a problem in Whiting, and a problem in Robertsdale, section of Hammond, and this would cover most of the cost of that project. We have $3.5 million set aside for a new firehouse in Robertsdale, which is Clark High School Field, basically where the Clark High School tennis courts are located, right next to the environmental center down there. That new firehouse would be similar to the one we built in Hesville. We have $3 million set aside for new infrastructure at Clark High School. For over a decade, the city of Hammond's been working with the school city, planning to one day get control of those fields and create a new neighborhood over there. We have identified over 100 parcels where we could use for new single-family homes in that area, including new condos along Calumet Avenue. $3 million, we get the infrastructure and the subdivision process going. Downtown Holman Avenue in downtown Hammond, in accordance with the Jeff Speck Plan, we set aside $5 million. We've had multiple public meetings, including one this week, the public unveiling of American Structure Points Plan to slow down traffic in downtown Hammond. I'll get to that more in a second. $5 million set aside for the new YMCA project, technically in the third district but adjacent to the fifth, used by the fourth, fifth, I mean, used by most of the city of Hammond. $5 million is half of the city of Hammond's commitment to that project. The other half is, we're going to plan to use through TIF, and then we're going to match $35 million for a $45 million project there. $3.5 million for a new Calumet Avenue pedestrian bridge between Munster and Hammond. Little Calumet River Basin Authority's putting a million dollars towards this project. I want to thank our former colleague, Dan Rippe, former fifth district councilman, for helping spearhead that $1 million donation. Town of Munster's financially committing to it as well. I'm not comfortable stating the amount out loud right now, but they've been working with us in this process, and we have every reason to believe they'll be participating in this project as well. $1 million for the reconstruction of Oxbow Road, which is a couple-mile stretch of road that serves no neighbors, and as a result, bless you, as a result, it's become neglected, and quite frankly, it's hard to justify spending a million dollars on a road that doesn't go to any homes. It's always been that way. It's unfortunate, but this ARP money will give us a chance to fix that badly-needed reconstruction. Half a million dollars for J.F. Mahoney Drive, which is a similar type of situation over by the Gene Shepherd Center. Half a million dollars for a new storm sewer and a 7,000-block of Schneider, which is one of the flood-prone areas of our city. We'll reconstruct that area. $800,000 for new single-family home developments on Florida Avenue in Hesville, new residential units. $3.6 million for a new Hesville Bridge to get residents over constantly stopped rail traffic crossing. This is our part. The state's putting in a lot more than that. I think it's, the project's over $10 million, and that'll begin very soon. $1.3 million for software updates and cybersecurity updates. $1 million towards Columbia Avenue water tank repairs, the one we're finishing right now. $1 million, this money can be used to reimburse the city for what we've done there. And, $400,000 for council chamber technology updates. You know more about that than I do. I don't know if anybody has any questions or if they want me to go through my whole report, but that's the part about the ARP resolution that's pending before you. These projects have been planned out for, in some cases, 10 years. In other cases, a lot within the last couple of years. But, like with Clark High School, at least 10 years. Just didn't have the money, didn't have the ability to get the fields. Now, with Clark High School shutting down, the opportunity presents itself, and then, of course, the federal government's ARP plan. So, that's that proposal, the resolution before you, has to pass the council before we could begin letting the projects. But, we anticipate on just about every single one of these projects, we could be in the ground, I mean, working on this in the spring. We'd be bidding these out over the summer, talking $38 million worth of work, in addition to what we're doing on capital improvements, in addition to what we're doing in our districts. So, it's, in addition to the federal government and the 200-plus million dollars that's going to be coming through the city of Hammond with the Westlake expansion, there's going to be a lot of work going on in our city over the next year. And, that was the purpose of the ARP, was for infrastructure, and that's what we focused on. I actually heard about one of my employees calling some members of the council and begging them for a bonus, and I want to apologize if you receive that phone call. That's totally out of line, and that employee will get spoken to about this. Quite frankly, Hammond City employees are paid pretty well, overall. In fact, I find employees in other cities and towns coming to our city all the time because of better equipment, better pay, so I'm shocked that an employee would lobby on behalf of the city of Hammond to try to get bonuses out of the ARP money. I'm totally opposed to that. I'll be honest with you, totally opposed to that. I don't think ARP money should be used for salaries in any way, shape, or form, and anybody from my administration that's talking to you otherwise is completely out of line. Okay? We have a bond right refinancing. This is on third and final. It's already gone up for first and second. This was an interest rate play. Basically, we had this bond financed in 2015 when interest rates were much higher. Interest rates are much lower now. Refinancing will result in a total savings of $2.7 million over the life of the bond. This is just like what many homeowners are doing, refinancing their homes right now with interest rates as low as they'll ever be in our lifetime, probably. We're trying to take advantage of that situation. We hope that the council supports us on that. It's up for third and final today. We have a responsible bidding ordinance, ordinance 2133, pending before you on first and second reading. This is an ordinance that is in response to a lot of city, a lot of states' right-to-work laws that have been passed over the years that have gutted unions. What this does is ensures that anybody that bids on a Hammond project of $150,000 or more meets certain eligibility requirements in order to be considered a responsible bidder. They must have things like established apprenticeship training programs in place. They must have drug testing protocols, things of that nature. This is up for first and second reading, and I'm not sure, I'm looking around, I don't see any of the union heads in here today. I think honestly, if you set this up for some type of hearing, maybe ask certain heads of certain unions in the region in Indiana to come in here and give you their opinion, I think it'd be worth it personally. Anyway, I'm not telling you what to do, but I think there's a lot of people that don't realize this is on first and second reading, and they'd be very interested in talking to you about it. It's a pro-union move, in my opinion. Eliminates a lot of the scab companies that are coming in here, and they're just fly-by-night operations bidding on our projects. And, if they're low bidder and they're responsible, we're supposed to go with them. This would require certain things of companies bidding on our projects. Update on the Hammond Digital Crosswords Data Center. The $75 million was what was first projected when we incentivized this project. To this point, the DX Data Center Group reports that they went well above the $60 million they promised, excuse me, and they're at $75 million currently. Their latest expansion is now underway. The next expansion's another $16 million investment, and it's going to improve the space with 10,000 square feet of new office space and 2,000 square feet of new data spinner space. So, $16 million expansion. This project is going to be close to $100 million when it's all said and done, so that's good news. We had a ribbon-cutting for a new corporate headquarters in Oxbow, which is in Hammond's fifth district. Oxbow down there, you know, south of Dalling Park, south of 8094. The business, Hammond Business Impact, moved into 2929 Oxbow Road, the first building we built down there. Impact took a large space in there and kept growing, and kept growing, and they've grown so much, they're leaving that first location and investing $4 million into another building that's going up there, which will be their own building, Impact Buildings, 14,000 square feet corporate headquarters for Impact. So, Impact is building their new corporate headquarters right now, and to show you how well we're doing down there, they're leaving the first building they moved into, leaving a space that's already been leased out to a company called Primary Energy out of Oakbrook, Oakbrook, Illinois. They're moving their corporate headquarters from Oakbrook to Hammond, Indiana, in the space that Impact is leaving so that they can build their corporate headquarters. So, we're doing well in Oxbow, happy to say. We held Mayor's Night Out in the fourth district. I appreciate Councilman Emerson for hosting me. I also appreciate the principal, Edison, Amy Hughes, and Scott Miller, the superintendent, for introducing me. We had a public unveiling, as I mentioned earlier, on Holman Avenue's redesign and reconstruction. We had it at the hub in downtown Hammond with about 100 people in attendance. American Structure Point unveiled their design. It was met happily. Quite frankly, there's been amazing amount of back and forth between the interested groups and Structure Point, so we unveiled basically what has been approved already. But, it's a plan. If you like to use downtown Hammond for a shortcut, you will not like this plan. If you're like, this is my way to get from Robertsdale to Munster, you're going to hate this plan. Downtown Hammond needs to get that traffic out of there. They need to shove that traffic up where it belongs, on Calumet Avenue, and have stop, and stop using downtown Hammond as a shortcut. This plan will do that. It's going to take four lanes down to two lanes, one lane in each direction. It's going to create new parking on the road. It's going to create new parking in the middle of the street. It's going to create, share the space, bike lanes. So, this is all in accordance with Jeff Speck's plans, the nationally-renowned planner that we hired to help us with this idea, and quite frankly, we learned so much from him in downtown Hammond that we're taking the same ideas to Hesville right now, and we have the same type of plan in Hesville, planned from the 6,400 block of Kennedy all the way to the 6,900 block of Kennedy. We changed that. Originally, it was 6,500 block of Kennedy, but we did it a block further to the north so we could include Freddie Steakhouse into this. So, what you're going to see in downtown Hesville, that's in the resolution, ready to be approved by the council hopefully, that we'll begin work on Kennedy Avenue and downtown Hammond at the same time, because both of them are facing the same types of problems, which is ridiculously high speeds, lack of parking, and people using it as a cut-through. In Kennedy, they're using it to get from East Chicago to Highland, or East Chicago to 8094. And, if they see that plan, they're going to hate it, but use Klein Avenue. That's the moral of the story. Last but not least, we had a 9/11 ceremony at the flagpole on State Line, right by the data center. I want to thank Mylan Krasinski and the Hammond Port Authority and our special event staff for putting on, I mean, obviously, a very somber occasion, the 20th anniversary of 9/11, but our special event staff and the college bounders that helped Mylan put this together. I think we have the new location for, definitely for 9/11 ceremonies, but for Veterans Day, Memorial Day, you really can't beat that location, right on the water with the biggest flag in Indiana flying right above you. We had a lot of help from elected officials. Oscar Martinez, Lake County Sheriff, did a flyover, appreciate that. We had the Hammond firefighters, Hammond police officers in full dress, the bagpipes, the whole thing. A lot of media coverage, so it was a great day. That's my update. I'm sorry it was so busy, but it's been three weeks since we last talked, so I'm available for any questions if you have it.
Councilman Torres.
On that $5 million for the downtown Holman Phase One?
Yes, sir.
Is that like a down payment, or is that the final estimate for that?
Thank you.
Infrastructure and redesign?
It's going to get us, I imagine there could be runovers. Let's say it's 5.5, but we've budgeted what it's going to cost us to go from Russell Street to the bridge with that phase for a reconstruction councilman. It's in the $5 million ballpark. Could come back at 4.8 when we bid it out, could come back at 5.5, but we got $5 million of American Rescue Plan money set aside for this in that resolution, sir.
Okay, there's no chance of being overestimated and be some left for some of the other streets around, for some of the other streets in that area?
Well, I don't know. I'm not sure. We have to bid it out. We do have a Phase Two on that downtown proposal. The Phase Two gets us from, instead of Russell Street being the southern border, it'll be Douglas Street. That'll be the next phase, and that'll be more money. Hopefully, Congress passes the infrastructure bill, the $1 trillion infrastructure bill. I'm doing quick math. We're looking at a similar amount of money, at least, if the infrastructure bill passes. I mean, this is a godsend, what we're dealing with here. We're able to finance badly-needed projects all over the city of Hammond right now, and if that infrastructure bill that's being debated in Congress passes, we'll be doing the same type of thing in a year, trying to figure out what projects need to be prioritized that we can get done. These are city-changing projects. The Hesville Bridge, I mean, how many complaints, Councilman Rakos, do we get about the stop trains in Hesville? Every day of our life, right?
Yes.
This'll change that. You just drive over it. I mean, this is amazing what's going on. Like, I tell you, as a mayor, I appreciate what's going on. I know the council appreciates it as well, but maybe we're not doing a good enough job telling our residents what's going on. This is life-changing for our city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
In that same vein, Oxbow Road, the problem there, since I've been there, has always been, it's a $1 million fix when we didn't get that amount in one year. And, Dean will tell you, because he explained it to me, there's a real small stretch that's like 700,000, and it has to do with the subgrade, and this is godsend, because this takes care of that problem and fixes that entire road, just like around Mahoney Drive. I mean, Dalling Park is beautiful, but that road is like a pump track.
Mm-hmm. And, Councilman Warple, another thing is, let's say that the Capital Improvement Board did prioritize Mahoney Drive, and they also prioritize Oxbow, and they said, we're going to spend 1.5 million of Hammond's gaming revenue. That would be 10% of our gaming revenue?
Yeah.
On two streets that have not one house on them. So, that's a tough swallow for anybody. Of course, a district councilman with limited amount of money, but even for the Capital Improvement Board. Now that we can do it here, we don't ever have to worry about those projects again because they're done, allowing the Capitol Review Board to focus on other big projects that need to get done. This is, like I said, and then, when they, when I hear our elected representatives talking about, we don't need this infrastructure bill, it makes me insane. Can you imagine how much of an impact that'll have on the city of Hammond? We're talking at least what we got from ARP, if that passes. I mean, our city logo should be a construction helmet next year. It's going to be busy with the Westlake and all the ARP money, and plus the Capital Improvement Board money. Anyway, any other?
Does anybody else have any questions on the Mayor tonight?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Spitali.
Any lots left in Oxbow? No, thank you. The question was, are there any lots left in Oxbow? Right now, with the new Impact Economic Development Project, the Class A office building, that is the last space we have available for any office buildings, and currently, we're under construction with a new hotel, which would be the third hotel up there, which is the last space available for hotels. Oxbow's mission accomplished. It is. Like, we could have put the banner up and not looked funny. It's done. We did it. It's taken a long time, but it's over. I mean, once, now that they're building Impact, and once that new hotel's in, we're done cutting ribbons. I mean, there's not a space left, so it's, we watched that one from beginning to end, many of us, so it's nice that it's finally done. And, by the way, we have others all over the city, right? We have them all over, but that's a neat one to see it from beginning to end, so.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for the Mayor? Hearing none, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Item number four on the agenda, approval of minutes.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
The motion to accept the minutes from August 23, 2021, be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion made to accept the minutes and place on file by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roque.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number seven, approval of claims.
Mr. President?
Item number five, I'm sorry. Councilman Rakos.
Making motion to pay claims, starting claims dated 8/30/2021 and ending with claims dated 9/8/2021. That would be claim 4183 through claim 4560, the amount of $9,797,473.52.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the claims by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
Making motion to amend in claim 4561 to Presumer Insurance Agency, the amount of $23,413 for the purchase of Sportsplex Annual Insurance Policy.
Second.
Motion to amend the claims has been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
This expense originally came before the council for approval, and the claim made out directly to Liberty Mutual back in August, and when the payment was sent to Liberty Mutual at the address listed on the W-9, it wound up never getting cashed. When the, that's when the Controller's Office got involved in trying to find out what was going on, and they said, requested another W-9 reflecting the correct address to mail a new check, and their representative expressed that they could not do that. So, she talked to Presumer Insurance Agency. They've offered to make the payment on our behalf and request reimbursement. The payment for insurance policy is due by Wednesday, and they're going to cancel the original check.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Just for clarification, is that 4561 or 4562?
Should be 4561.
We do have a 4561 already on the claim.
4562, I'm sorry.
We got to start over, or can we just go with 4562? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roque on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. The amendment passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now, the claims as amendment. Carmen Roque.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, claims as amended pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have anything on the communications?
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
The HUGS, hold on one second. HUGS is having a, the Mexican Day Parade on Sunday, the 19th. Hold on one second. It goes from Morton High School down Grand to 165th to Kennedy, and Kennedy, down south on Kennedy to Hesville Park, and that'll be the fifth annual Mexican Independence Day Parade, and that'll be this coming Sunday, the 19th.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Communications are now closed. Number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, council as a whole will be bringing out 2128, and I also have a Capital Improvements Board update for the meeting of September 7. We approved $9,800 for the geotechnical design for 177th Street, Oxbow Road. We also approved $29,400 for Chicago Street Phase Two modifications to 35 manholes. The next meeting will be September 20 at 4:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Also, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Coming up on Thursday, September 16, the Hesville Crime Watch will meet at 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. On the 22nd, I don't know, I think that's a Wednesday, September 22 at 1:00 p.m., there will be a community meeting, community slash crime watch at Hammond Elderly, as I said, that will be at 1:00 p.m. On Friday, October 1, Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School. That is a bilingual program, beginning at 9:15 a.m. On Wednesday, October 6, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, beginning at 6:30 p.m. And, on Thursday, October 14, the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College at 6:30 p.m. As usual, if you see something, say something. If you see something that just does not seem right, call 911. The police want us to bother them with suspicious activity, so please, call 911 when you have any questions or concerns, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mayor Orfelt, I got a notification. The fifth district mayor's night out has been changed, is that correct? From October 5 to a different date?
Yes, I believe that's true. Hold on. Yeah, it has been changed. I'm not sure when it was rescheduled, though.
Yeah, I just remember, I was called, receiving a call from...
My calendar's impossible, so I'm trying to accommodate everything, and that was not possible to pull off that night. I think November's was changed also, so, yeah, but...
I just, I thought of it when she was giving the dates for the crime reports, so...
We'll advertise it appropriately.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on their committee reports? Right, committee reports? Anybody else have anything on their committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance, third reading and final passage.[1753.26]
Twenty-one twenty-eight. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, authorizing the issuance and sale of revenue bonds of the City of Hammond, Indiana to refund certain outstanding bonds previously issued by the city together with expenses in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-one twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, the, uh, bonds were originally passed in November of twenty fourteen. It was originally for ten years going through, uh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the refinancing will save us two point six eight five million dollars over the life of the bond. The original rate was six percent. It will now be three point two five. And, uh, we will extend the, uh, life of the bond by five years so we can, uh, the city can easily keep up with the three million dollar obligation per year.
Is there any discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roque.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. That concludes, uh, introduction of ordinance, I mean, um, third and final passage, right? That was it. Okay. Item number ten, introduction of ordinances.
Twenty-one thirty. An ordinance to appropriate from the A R P A Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for purposes of the American Rescue Plan Act, A R P A.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines, who is also the sponsor of this ordinance?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, I move for first and second reading. Uh, refer to council as a whole with a meeting beginning at five fifteen on September twenty-seventh. There will also be a public hearing on September twenty-seventh.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, this outlines, uh, the, um, the funding that we have already received, twenty-five point six nine million dollars and it's already, uh, been deposited in our, um, ARP fund. Uh, there are, and, uh, I believe Mayor went through, uh, all of the projects that we will be able to do as the result of, uh, of getting this, this money and so, uh, we should be, uh, very excited and grateful.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Carmen Roque on the motion to pass first and second reading.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Twenty-one thirty-one. An ordinance amending ordinance numbers seventy-five ninety-eight, eighty-three forty-eight, eighty-seven fifty-three, ninety-one sixty-one, and ninety-three fifty-seven, also known as section ninety-three point zero zero five of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to ambulance user fees to increase loaded mileage rate.
Sponsored by Councilman Rakos.
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
Move to pass the first and second reading, twenty-one thirty-one.
Motion's been made to pass on first and second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
This, uh, will increase the mileage to seventeen dollars and fifty cents per mile. Uh, there has been a while since we've had an increase on it and due to fuel costs and equipment, uh, an increase was needed. I, uh, I would, uh, submit for a final passage adoption at our next meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President? I just wanted to point out this fee...
I was gonna say Councilman Mayor. Mayor.
I, I just wanted to point out in addition, but, uh, Councilman Rakos said this fee is a fee that's ninety-nine percent of the time paid by insurance companies. Um, I just wanted to point that out. This isn't a fee that's picked up by Hammond homeowners in any way, shape, or form. So this is more, you know, insurance company thing. So I just thought that was important to point out.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Pass the first and second reading. Uh, Carmen Roque.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number C.
Twenty-one thirty-two. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen. An ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as amended for property commonly known as five eighty-four Sibley Street, Hammond, Indiana, four six three two oh.
Tutioned by Carlos Hernandez, sponsored by Councilman Pete Torres.
Mr. President?
Councilman Torres.
Uh, yeah, this, uh, ordinance is to reclassify five eighty-four Sibley Street from S one open space recreational facility, facilities district to R one and two family residential district and I move for first and second, uh, passage.
Move for first and second reading.
Second.
Uh, did you wanna put it on a committee or no?
Yeah, we can put it at, uh, council as a whole and, uh, public hearing on the twenty-seventh, September.
Mr. President? I, I do believe there is, uh, an intent to consider on this ordinance.
Okay, we can...
Mr. Paulin.
Council, if I may, um, you're not required to have a public hearing. It's just a fir... Notice of intent to consider for the September twenty-seventh.
Okay, I, I thought we, it was agreed on caucus that a public hearing was needed, but apparently not.
It says it.
No. There is... There's no, the council's not required to do a public hearing because the Plan Commission held the public hearing. So it's just... First and second reading, council or commi... council, committee of the whole and for, um, intent to consider on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President?
Councilman Torres.
I amend my motion or change my motion. Let's put it, council as a whole with, uh, considered to intent for third reading on the twenty-seventh.
Motion's been made to go council as a whole on September twenty-seventh at five twenty with an intent to consider on September twenty-seventh as well. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clark, Carmen Roque.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number D.
Twenty-one thirty-three. An ordinance to repeal ordinance seventy-three ninety-six and amended ordinance eighty-three seventy, also known as chapter one oh three of Title Nine of the Hammond Municipal Code and adopt and enact chapter one oh seven of Title Nine of the Hammond Municipal Code relating to responsible bidding practices and submission requirements on public works projects.
Mr. President?
Uh, sponsored by Councilman Spitali.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
Move the first and second reading, refer to council as a whole. The meeting's set for September twenty-seventh at five twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made for first and second reading, council as a whole on September twenty-seventh at five twenty-five. Seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roque.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number E.
Twenty-one thirty-four. An ordinance vacating a fourteen-foot alley in the fifty-one hundred block east of Holman, lying between Holman Avenue and the bus lane at the Dan Raven Plaza in the City of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President?
Councilman Torres.
Move for first and second reading with a public hearing on the twenty-seventh.
Second.
Motion's been made for move for first and second reading, council as a whole on the twenty-seventh with a public hearing set. Got a time for that, Councilman Torres and council as a whole?
Five fifteen or...
Five fifteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been, uh, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President? This is just a vacation of an alley needed as part of that, uh, downtown redevelopment plan, uh, uh, for the fifty-one hundred block of, of Holman Avenue.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roque.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. That concludes the reading of the ordinances. Item number eleven, resolutions. Item A.
Twenty-one R twenty-five. A resolution adopting an initial community investment plan for the City of Hammond for the use of funds provided under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-one R twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
This resolution is just saying that we agree to, uh, hear the ordinance twenty-one, what was it, twenty-one, uh, twenty-one thirty to consider the distribution of the ARP funds.
Is there any further discussion? Carmen Roque.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number B.
Twenty-one R twenty-six. A resolution authorizing the Hammond Fire Department to apply for a twenty-twenty-one NIPSCO Public Safety Education and Training Action Grant.
Mr. President?
Sponsored by Councilman Rakos. Councilman Rakos.
Make motion we pass twenty-one R twenty-six?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
This is a grant from NIPSCO for public safety education and local public agencies, safety agencies. Hammond Fire Department, I believe it's the first time for them to also be able to get a five thousand dollar grant. Be used for community, uh, training, uh, programming and training and, um, we need to pass this in order for them to be able to apply for the, uh, and spend the, uh, the grant from NIPSCO.
Is there any further discussion on twenty-one R twenty-six? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roque.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number C.
Twenty-one R twenty-seven. A resolution authorizing the Hammond Police Department to apply for a twenty-twenty-one NIPSCO Public Safety Education and Training Action Grant.
Mr. President?
Councilman... Men Spitali.
For final passage of twenty-one R dash twenty-seven?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
President?
Councilman Spitali.
Also a grant that comes before us for annually, uh, offers for the public safety grant money and local public and safety agencies. Also, this is for the, uh, first responders also. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Carmen Roque.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number D.
Twenty-one R twenty-eight. A resolution authorizing the use of credit cards by designated officials and employees of the City of Hammond.
Um, Mr...
Sponsored by Councilwoman Vines.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-one R twenty-eight.
Motion? Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Torres. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, the State Board of Accounts has certain regulations that apply to the use of credit cards by, uh, governmental units. Uh, this, the, everything will be handled, um, by the controller. She will oversee the issuance of the credit cards. She will approve any transaction before it even takes place. So there is definitely oversight on the use of the credit cards.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carmen Roque.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. That concludes resolutions. Item number twelve, no unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, we have a council meeting scheduled on, uh, October eleventh. That is a holiday. I would like... would like to reschedule that to October twelfth.
Motion's been made to reschedule the October eleventh meeting to October twelfth. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, or seconded by Councilman Rakos. Is there any further discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there anything else on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I received an email from the Hammond Police Department. They are going to have a Hammond Police Department Citizens Police Academy beginning on September twenty-eighth going through November sixteenth. And I'll read you what their intention is. The Citizens Police Academy was established to promote an understanding of the Hammond Police Department and its policies and procedures. In addition, the academy provides training in all aspects of law enforcement and the issues that face police officers on a daily basis. Our goal is to foster a spirit of cooperation between the city, its citizens and their police department. It is hoped that graduates will get to know more about the men and women who are protecting their community and why they make decisions they do while performing their duties. There, you do have to sign up for this and the phone number is eight-five-two-two-nine-one-seven. I've heard of people who have gone to this and it's really quite beneficial and you do develop a greater of understanding of how and why the police officers do their job the way that they do and protect us. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Is there any, anything else on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I'd like to do, okay, like to make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-one thirty-five.
We need a motion to suspend the...
Excuse me, yeah.
Some move.
A motion to suspend the rules.
A motion to suspend the rules to consider...
To introduce twenty-one thirty-five.
To consider ordinance twenty-one thirty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on those?
Requires a two-thirds vote.
Carmen Roca.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed to suspend the rules. Councilman Torres.
Okay, ordinance twenty-one thirty-five is to, an ordinance establishing a two-way street on one block of Doty Street to access Holman Avenue.
Is there a second on the motion? Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Spitali to vacate the, or for, I'm sorry, for ordinance twenty-one thirty-five. Is that assigned the number, is that the number going to be assigned by the clerk's office?
Twenty-one thirty-five.
Twenty-one thirty-five.
And I don't know if this matters to our attorney, but I noticed on the ordinance there's no place for the mayor to sign. That can be...
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move that we include in the ordinance a place for the clerk to certify and a place for the mayor to sign.
Second.
The motion's been made to amend the ordinance. We're making the motion to put this in first and second reading, correct?
Did, did Councilman Torres do that?
No, I did not mention that, but...
Okay.
We, we never got the ordinance introduced by the clerk. That's what threw me off. But, yeah, we include first and second reading.
Carmen, can you read it by title, please?
Twenty-one thirty-five, an ordinance establishing a two-way street on one block of Doty Street to access Holman Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, I move for ordinance twenty-one thirty-five for first and second reading on the twenty-seventh.
Second.
Second. The ordinance has been introduced by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Now, do we want to amend it in...
Mr. President.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. I would like to restate my amendment to add a line for the clerk to certify and for the mayor to sign this ordinance.
So my question is, are we making a motion to amend the ordinance now? Or are we making a motion to put it in first and second reading?
Do we think first and then order the amendment?
So the motion to the amendment, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now, place in first and second reading as amended on September twenty-seventh. Is there, is there any discussion?
I'm going to discuss it.
Is there any discussion? Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. I will entertain a motion to go back to the regular order of business.
Make a motion to go back to regular business.
Second.
Motion's been made to go back to regular order of business by Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilman Tyler. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let, regular order of business as we start, we're back to new and unfinished business. Is there anybody else with any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Just want to give our updated COVID numbers for September thirteenth from our last meeting. For four-six-three-two-oh, we are, have an additional ninety-three new cases. For four-six-three-two-seven, we have an additional fifty-eight new cases. For four-six-three-two-three, we have an additional one-hundred-and-twenty-nine new cases. For four-six-three-two-four, we have an additional one-hundred-and-forty-one new cases. For four-six-three-nine-four, we have an additional fifty-nine new cases. That's three-hundred-and-seventy new cases from last meeting to this meeting, which is an extreme jump from one-hundred-and-one new cases the last meeting. In the meeting before that, we were at one-hundred. As for our vaccine numbers, for four-six-three-two-oh, we have two-hundred-and-seventy-nine new fully vaccinated residents with a four percent increase. For four-six-three-two-seven, we have two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty-five new fully vaccinated residents. That's four-point-two percent increase. For four-six-three-two-three, four-hundred-and-three new fully vaccinated residents. That's three-point-six percent increase. For four-six-three-two-four, four-hundred-and-fourteen new fully vaccinated residents, three-hundred, three-point-nine percent increase. And for four-six-three-nine-four, one-hundred-and-eighty new fully vaccinated residents, which is a two, no, a three-point-two percent increase. So I just want to continue to encourage our residents, if you have not got vaccinated, look into getting vaccinated. As we can see that these numbers have jumped up extremely from the last meeting. I will continue to update you. Please look into vaccination. We want to continue to help to keep you safe. Mask up. Continue to social distance as much as possible and stay safe.
Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anyone else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, Ken Bestasik, did I get it right?
I live at sixty-nine twenty-two Marshall in Hessville, and I grew up there in Hessville so far all my life. I brought this issue up last meeting about the heavy truck traffic going down Kennedy Avenue. Dump trucks back and forth, you could check every five minutes they're going through. They're going all the way into East Chicago, one-hundred-and-fifty-first and Kennedy, coming in and out. We have no idea what they're carrying, toxic waste, who knows what. There's now, you see steel haulers, there's steel coils on them, beams. And I was told Kennedy Avenue is supposed to be for local traffic. It's being abused. The traffic, they come in the left lane, they push you right out of the way. And we're talking about spending millions of dollars to improve Kennedy Avenue? For what? That's going to reduce the traffic? They can't use Kennet, they can't use Calumet, the Boulevard or Klein Avenue. They're tearing up our roads. Now we just repay what, maybe a few years ago. Another issue is that Hessville Park, they spent millions of dollars for a beautified park, walking path, we walk. There's always cars parked at the shelter on Kennedy Avenue. Right there, no authorized vehicles, motorized. They're still parking there, right on the walking path. I have called nine-one-one myself many times. They come out, tell them to leave. We can't enforce that. And also, there's the business, the old bargain finder at seventy-one forty-seven Kennedy Avenue, Orchard Drive in Kennedy. It's a dilapidated building, beat up. It's probably been there fifty years, but what an eyesore, right next to the schoolhouse there at the park. Why can't the city just take it down and just make that a parking lot? Because the parking lot during the summer with baseball players, it's pretty full. I mean, if you look at, if my house looked like that building, I would have code enforcement after me. Take care of your property, you know? So I don't know what's going on with these issues. I bring it up, I've talked to people in person, I've called, no action. This has been brought up at a crime watch meeting beginning of summer with all this traffic, dump trucks, every five, you could sit there in Hessville Park, just one, running right up the expressway, back and forth, back and forth. You could hear them in my backyard working, clanking, bang, 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 going all the way down. So they're tearing up our roads. Of course, you know, whether they care. Again, we have all these regulations, ordinances we talk about, but if we don't enforce them, what are we doing here? Right? We're supposed to be a country of laws? So what? It's just aggravating. I grew up in Hessville, I seen a lot of changes over the years. River Park Apartments, all that stuff, Oxbow. Used to go playing hockey back in there years ago on the river. That's why I come up with all these cuts and bruises infected, you know, back years ago. But this traffic going down the Kennedy Avenue, it's out of control. You'll see steel haulers with beams, coils, everything else going down. Like I said, the parking at the shelters, no parking there, no motorized vehicles, and they're still parking there. So what do we do?
Thank you. I'll address you. Thank you, Mr. Bestas.
Okay.
Sir, I, you didn't sign, but go ahead. If you can state your name and address, please.
I didn't know you had to sign that form.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. One second. Hi, or good evening. I am David Pustek, and I live on New York Avenue in the first district. First, I want to thank Congresswoman Vines, who responded to me, communicated with me and helped me on a different matter, totally different matter. But when you receive a response, well, when you don't receive responses, as I have, that has been happening since May, I really did appreciate you taking up my little cause. This is different. This is a little bit different. I attended the last Hammond Redevelopment Commission meeting where one of the agenda items had to do with Calumet College reclaiming. Well, I use that word reclaiming again. Reclaiming the New York Avenue property to build a student dormitory building. The property between the college and the new, and the new Parrot Housing Units has a long history, and I'm a witness to that history. I want to remind you that the property and the addresses are twenty-four fifty and twenty-five twelve New York Avenue, was donated to the college upfront. The college leased, sold, and then the property eventually got abandoned. Hammond took over that property and demolished the buildings at a cost of eight-hundred-thousand dollars. Those funds were supposed to be covered through the redevelopment of the property. At the meeting, a representative from the college spoke about the benefits to the college to expand and attract more students, essential to the growth of that college. No one at the meeting spoke of the direct benefits and the recovery of this eight-hundred-thousand dollars investment. I truly hope that it was not just to, it was not the unstated benefit just to cross, you know, property off the list. Calumet College pays no state taxes, they pay no property taxes. Unless the purchase price is a million dollars, there would be no return on this eight-hundred-thousand dollars investment. There needs to be a presentation justifying the benefits to Hammond, its residents and neighbors. Next door to the college, north of the college, on the twenty-three-hundred block, that property looks suitable to develop and is large enough to fit into the college's development plans. The college may already own that property because they're maintaining the ground maintenance on it. So I don't know who owns it, but they might already have owned it. So if that property is selected for their development, then Hammond is not involved at all. The New York Avenue site should be awarded and reserved for revenue generating property taxpaying entities. That would be the only viable alternative to recover your constituents' contribution to this eight-hundred-thousand-dollar demolition cost. Remember, we all pay for that through our tax dollars. That new university facilities would have been ideal for this location. It's a prime piece of property, and with the economy turning around, a new taxpaying industrial company will come forward. I am asking you that you attend or send a note to the next meeting of the Hammond Redevelopment Commission on behalf of your constituents that contributed this eight-hundred-thousand-dollar investment in the property. Please show your support. Please show your, your support to reserve the property to a revenue generating property paying taxing entity or express your report for the transfer of the property, but please list what benefits it is to Hammond, its, its residents and its neighbors.
Sir, your three minutes are, time is up.
It's important enough to...
Pardon me?
Do one more little paragraph?
Go ahead with the, go ahead.
Okay. Please don't let this become $800,000 photo op for the mayor or for the commission celebrating the property being crossed off the redevelopment list. That would be an epic failure in fiduciary responsibility. I did speak these comments at the commission meeting, but felt that they didn't take me serious. So I think your voices are a lot stronger, maybe that'll help this cause. Thanks.
Thank you. Nobody else signed up for public expression? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made, seconded by...
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Alexander, seconded by Councilman Tyler. Carmen Roca.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed.